Okay, good evening. I'd like to call the Zoning Board of Appeals for Tuesday, April 1st, 2025, to order. Will the city call the roll, please?
Ms. Defoe.
Here.
Mr. Friedman. Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Ms. Libet.
Present.
Mr. Jenkins.
Present.
Mr. Havas. Madam Chairperson, you have a quorum to conduct business.
Thank you. Are there any communications?
None at this time.
Okay, so we will move into our public hearing. For those of you who haven't joined us before, I'll briefly describe how we conduct business. The city will call the case by the case number, read a brief description of that case, then we ask the appellant to step to the microphone and explain to the board what you're asking for and why. There's also a sign-in sheet, if you would sign in while you're at the podium. Then the city will read the findings of fact. We'll ask you to agree with those facts or add any other factual information at that time. The city will give a recommendation. You can also speak after the recommendation is provided. We'll open it then to public comment, so if you're here from the public to speak on a case, that would be your opportunity to come forward. Then we will turn it over to the board to make a decision and then move on to the next case. So will the city call the first case, please?
Case number 25-03. The appellant, Kayla Dogger, Dogger Signs and Graphics, representing Brian Nager, manager of Solo Company LLC, is requesting the following waivers from the board. One, a waiver of wall sign area, 287 square feet proposed, 200 square feet permitted, a variance of 87 square feet. Two, a waiver for an additional 48 inches times 48 inches, 16 square feet, non-illuminated wall sign plaque. Two wall signs proposed, one wall sign permitted. The property is located on the west side of Greenfield Road between Providence Drive and Mount Vernon Street at 23691 Greenfield Road, Sidwell parcel number 762425401018, zoned B3, general business district. This appeal is to Chapter 99, Article 11, Section 8.59, 1B, C, more commonly known as the sign ordinance.
Great, thank you. Is the appellant here? Yeah, okay. If you could step to the microphone and each state your name and address for the record, please?
This is Kayla Dogger from Dogger Signs and Graphics.
And your address, please.
22476 Telegraph Road in Southfield.
Great, thank you.
Good evening. Richard Atto from Atto Contracting, 2150 Franklin and Bloomfield. And I represent the owner, Mr. Nager, who's here, and also Scott is here with Blair Sign Company.
Okay.
And we respectfully make this request for several reasons. I was here last month or so and talked about the history of the center, how we acquired two abandoned office buildings from the city and did a lot of environmental abatement and built this building around 27 years ago. I was lucky enough to stand right here in front of the city council when they rezoned the property. And then for a long time, there was a Kroger store in the shopping center and they left and went to another city. They don't know what they're missing when they left Southfield, but the center's been vacant mostly because of that big hole in there and trying to revitalize the center. So we have five below, which you graciously granted the variance about a month or two ago. And tonight, we actually have two cases. We have the Burlington and another one at the same center, all three of which were the part of the Kroger store. So the similar reasons, it sounds like a lot of variance, but it's just the way that it's calculated with the particular parts of the sign that extend higher and lower. And when you extend a rectangle around it, it sounds like a lot of extra square footage, but it's really not. The building, like I said, has been predominantly vacant for over three years now since the Kroger left. And it does sit far back from Greenfield, so to breathe some new life into the center with these new tenants, we respectfully request the variance. And I'll ask Scott if he has any other comments to make about the sign itself.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you for your time.
If you could just state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, my name's Scott Bilbury. I'm with Blair Sign Programs out of San Diego, California, 92073 Santee, California. What we're asking for is a little bit of relief on, as the gentleman spoke, is how to calculate the square footage. I don't know if you have this in front of you, but if you calculate it by taking all the topography out of it, giving us an eight-line calculation, it brings it down to 174 square feet. And it's their branding that they've had since 1982. They have changed the tagline a little bit, but since then, but it's hard to get away from something that's 40-some years old. And it also looks organic to the facade. It's falling about the 60/40 rule. It's actually about 50/50. With the facade this side, they'd usually be asking for an 84-inch letter, not a 66-inch letter. But in respects to your code, they're trying to compromise a little bit. So, and there is a $400, or $400-foot reading distance from the front of the facade to the street, which, straight on, it's real readable, but at a bleak angle, where you're always reading it from a car, you do need that extra height. So we're just asking for a little bit of relief from your code on your calculations and the square footage.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? No? Okay. Will the city read the findings of fact, please?
The appellant, Kayla Dogger, Dogger Signs and Graphics, representing Brian Nager, manager of Solo Company LLC, is requesting the following waivers from the board. A waiver of wall sign area, 287 square feet proposed, 200 square feet permitted, a variance of 87 square feet. A waiver for an additional 48 inches times 48 inches, 16 square feet, non-illuminated wall sign plaque. Two wall signs proposed, one wall sign permitted. The property is located on the west side of Greenfield Road between Providence Drive and Mount Vernon Street at 23691 Greenfield Road, Sidwell parcel number 762425401018, zoned B3, general business district. This appeal is to Chapter 99, Article 11, Section 8.59, 1B, C, more commonly known as the sign ordinance. The properties to the north are zoned RT. The west portion of this RT-zoned area is part of the adjacent high-rise residential property parcel to the west-zoned RMU. This area has a walking path and a designated outdoor cooking-dining area that is accessible from the adjacent high-rise residential property, RMU, to the west. The east portion of this RT-zoned area is located at the southwest corner of Mount Vernon Street and Greenfield Road. This vacant property is owned by the city of Southfield and is landscaped with small trees and/or bushes. The properties to the south are zoned RMM, Multiple Family Residential District, medium-rise, and B3, general business district. The village at Cornerstone, a residential townhouse community, is located within the RMM, Multiple Family Residential Medium-Rise District to the south. There are also several existing businesses within the B3 General Business District that is located at the south, including a single-story multi-tenant building as well as an Outback Steakhouse Restaurant with a dining room. The properties to the east are located within the city of Oak Park along the east side of Greenfield Road. These properties appear to be single-family residential properties. The subject property is approximately 23,224 square feet and is the northernmost tenant space within an approximately 65,000-square-foot commercial building. The subject property is currently under construction and is the future location of a Burlington Retail Store. The storefront for Burlington is approximately 106 linear feet.
All right, thank you. Do you agree with those facts?
Yes.
Okay, are there any other facts you'd like to add at this time?
I do not know.
Okay. Will the city read the recommendation, please?
Staff recommendation is for favorable consideration for, one, waiver of wall sign area, 287 square feet proposed, 200 square feet permitted, a variance of 87 square feet, and waiver for an additional 48 inches times 48 inches, 16 square feet, non-illuminated wall sign plaque. Two wall signs proposed, one wall sign permitted, with the following conditions: The appellant secures all the required permits and inspections receive final approval from the city of Southfield Building Department. This recommendation is based on the following: The proposed wall signs would face the parking lot. The proposed wall signs would be facing a major thoroughfare. Although one wall sign is permitted per tenant, the additional 48 inches times 48 inches non-illuminated wall sign plaque appears to be consistent with the Burlington Retail storefront design logo. Due to extraordinary or exceptional conditions of the property on which the signs are proposed and the strict application of the regulations would result in practical difficulties to or undue hardship upon the owner of such property, provided such relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantially impairing the intent and purpose of this chapter, and that the proposed signs are consistent with the spirit and intent of this chapter and the regulations which apply to the zoning district, and that the proposed signs are in keeping with the character of the surrounding area and would not have an adverse or detrimental effect upon adjacent or surrounding properties, and that the proposed signs will not interfere with or be objectionable from the standpoint of traffic safety.
Great, thank you. Anything else before we open to public comment? Okay, so we will open public comment on this case. If you are here and wish to speak, please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Hello, I'm Molly Lalonde, the Executive Director for the Southfield Downtown Development Authority. My address is 18,000 West Nine Mile Roads, Suite 320. And I take care of this district. This is the Cornerstone District. This is on the north end, previously mentioned, surrounded by residential, aka potential customers. And I just wanted to say that I am in support of this store, the set of stores that are coming in. I think this is going to be very good for the shopping center. And I think it will be an attraction for small businesses to be interested in coming into the rest of the shopping center, so it'll revitalize the whole area. This is right down the street from the Northland City Center and also right around the corner from Providence Hospital, which is Southfield's largest employer. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak during public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment and turn it over to the board. Mr. Jenkins?
The property is located on west-
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Jenkins. Do you support it, or?
Well, I was just going to repeat something saying what they said, okay?
Oh, sure.
I'm totally supportive.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, so, yes.
Good, okay. Great, thank you. Mr. Rogers?
I'm good with this.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Libet?
I am in support as well.
I am also. So, Mr. Jenkins, now if you want to make a motion for us?
Well, I make a motion that we approve the case 2503 in regards to a new sign, okay?
Okay, sounds good. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, your request is granted. Will the city call the next case, please?
Case number 25-07. The appellant, Robert Dempster from Dempster Designs, representing the owner, Ara Telbelian, Director of Marketing for Henry Ford Health, is requesting the following waivers from the board. A waiver of time period allowed, six months proposed, not more than 30 days every three months allowed, a variance of five months or approximately 150 days, and a waiver in banner size, 840 square feet proposed, 50 square feet allowed, a variance of 790 square feet. The property is located on the south side of Nine Mile Road between Providence Drive and Greenfield Road at 16001 West Nine Mile Road, Sidwell parcel number 762436203001, zoned ERO, Education Research Office. This appeal is to Section 8.51, Article 4, Parts 1BD, Chapter 99 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the sign ordinance.
Thank you. Hi, good evening.
Hi there.
If you could state your name and address for the record, please?
Okay, my name is Robert Dempster, Dempster Designs, at 2150 Plus Drive in Brighton, Michigan.
Great, thank you. And can you explain to the board what you're asking for and why?
Well, we're asking for a variance to put up the banners. We're working on, where Henry Ford took over, acquired nine hospitals, and this is one of them. And we're facing this parking lot and we're having brand awareness of Henry Ford Hospital, Henry Ford Health. And that's why we're here. We want everybody to know that we're here and it's a new brand and it's exciting, especially on April 1st, you know what I mean?
All right, thank you.
That's right.
Okay, will the city read the findings of fact, please?
The appellant, Robert Dempster from Dempster Signs, representing the owner, Ara Telbelian, Director of Marketing for Henry Ford Health, is requesting the following waivers from the board. A waiver of time period allowed for temporary banner, six months proposed, not more than 30 days every three months allowed, a variance of five months or approximately 150 days, and a waiver in banner size, 840 square feet proposed, 50 square feet allowed, a variance of 790 square feet. The property is located on the south side of Nine Mile Road between Providence Drive and Greenfield Road at 16001 West Nine Mile Road, Sidwell parcel number 762436203001, zoned ERO, Education Research Office. This appeal is to Section 8.51, Article 4, Parts 1BD, Chapter 99 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the sign ordinance. The properties to the north are zoned B3, General Business, and ERO, Education Research Office, and includes an existing two-story building containing a pediatric care clinic. There is also an existing six-story multi-tenant general business building located to the north of the subject property. The property to the south is zoned RS, Regional Shopping, and is the location of the Northland City Center Development Project presently under construction. The properties to the east are zoned ERO, Education Research Office, and B2, Planned Business. Two multi-story medical buildings are located within the ERO Education Research Office zone. There is a single-story mixed-use building within the B2 Planned Business Zone and includes several restaurants, a general merchandise convenience store, a jewelry store, and a nail salon. The properties to the west are zoned RMU, Multiple Family Highrise, and is the present location of the Legacy Place Condos and North Park Place Apartments. The subject property is zoned ERO and is the present location of Henry Ford Health, formerly Ascension Providence Hospital. The subject property is an eight-story medical facility campus and was built in 1978. The subject property is approximately 134,426 square feet. The surrounding properties are mostly conforming or legal non-conforming and setback in lot coverage requirements.
All right, thank you. Do you agree with those facts?
Yes, I do.
Okay, are there any other facts you'd like to add at this time?
We're excited to be here. We're excited to be in the community. We employ quite a few people. And we're just excited to be here, have Southfield keep growing, you know? It's a beautiful thing.
All right, thank you. Will the city read the recommendation, please?
Staff recommendation is for disapproval for, one, a waiver of time period for a temporary banner, six months proposed, not more than 30 days every three months allowed, a variance of five months or approximately 150 days, and a waiver in banner size, 840 square feet proposed, 50 square feet allowed, a variance of 790 square feet. This recommendation is based on the following: An excessive time period waiver request, which would be approximately six times what is permitted, not more than 30 days every three months is allowed, and an excessive banner size waiver request, which would be approximately 16.8 times what is permitted, 50 square feet is allowed, and that the proposed sign would not be consistent with the spirit and intent of this chapter and the regulations, correction, and the regulations which apply to the zoning district.
Okay, thank you. Anything else you'd like to add before public comment?
Well, I would, I think it would look great there and help the community. That's me. It's business and it's good business. It's a positive thing, that's what I would say.
Okay.
It's a positive for our community.
Okay, thank you. So we'll open public comment on this case. If there's anyone who wishes to speak on this case, now would be your opportunity.
Oh, excuse me.
Hello, Molly Lalonde, the Executive Director. Do you need me to do the whole thing each time?
If you don't mind.
Okay. The Executive Director for the Southfield Downtown Development Authority. My office is located at 18,000 West Nine Mile, Suite 320. I want to talk about scale for the hospital. The city of Southfield and the Southfield DDA jointly put some banners up to welcome Henry Ford Health to the community. We had them on Nine Mile. It's very hard to get the scale to look right with the large buildings and to make them legible from the, you know, kind of far away from the road. This is temporary?
It's a temporary.
Is it temporary? Okay, so there's going to be a beautiful Henry Ford sign, permanent sign, put up at some point, right?
Yes.
Yes, so I think that this is appropriate. We're very excited that they're here and I am in favor of this variance. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this case? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and turn it over to the board. Mr. Rogers?
My first question is, is this a six-month, this is just one time and that's it, as being asked for, for the banner length of time?
The request is just for six months?
That's my understanding, yes.
Would somebody be allowed to come back and ask for another six months, or whatever, 30 days, whatever it is?
According to the ordinance, you're allowed one every 30, it says not more than 30 days every three months.
Every three months, okay. I don't have a problem with the large banner. I do think you need to have a large banner to see it from the road. The size is probably appropriate, even though the code reads differently. And I think the spirit of the banner issue in the city of Southfield is more like people are trying to be rah-rah with their business. I don't think that applies to a hospital. I think that we need a hospital like that in Southfield. So I hope that the sign brings more potential clients for good reasons, in that ultimately you'll have replacements for, you know, a permanent sign in the future. So I'm for it.
Okay, Ms. Libet?
I just have one question. When will the permanent sign be ready? Do you have an idea?
Well, we're attempting and trying to put them up as soon as possible, but because of the nine locations, they have to manufacture those. So the fabrication is there. We've been met with great success and people like the banners that we have put up in various cities. So there's nine. We want the permanent ones up as soon as possible, so we could keep this one up until that sign does come in place. So that's why we're asking for six months and hopefully we'd have it before that. But it's exciting that areas, you know, welcoming people, inviting. There's a little action going on and I think this really helps out.
We're a small community and so people need to know that that's where our hospital is. So if someone has a question, they can, they will be able to direct them with this sign, this logo, and these colors. So I am in favor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jenkins, your opinion?
Go Henry, okay? I'm also in favor of the six months proposed, but I would encourage you, if in fact you could, to put the permanent sign up quicker, okay, as soon as possible. But because you are providing service in a hospital to our community, I think it's grand that we acknowledge that and in favor of you doing, putting the sign up.
Yes.
So I say thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think this helps out too, that it's set back so far, but you know, in signage, it's readability and wayfinding. And this actually gives a great impression for your community and us. And Henry Ford is a super company. It's a super hospital.
And then I just have one question. At the end, if the sign were to go up in four months, the banner would come down when the permanent sign goes up?
If that's what you'd like, sure.
Okay, so I just wonder if that's a condition that we would support, taking the banner down once the permanent sign goes up?
I mean, would that, would you lose something if in fact you took the temporary, I mean, temporary sign down, if in fact you get the permit up?
Would we lose something?
Yeah.
I hope not. I think that, you know, we're here just to brand forward the new facility, you know, the new image of the hospital.
Is the permanent sign location intended to be where the current sign location is or where the banner is?
I think that that's going to be, you see where Ascension is right now?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know for sure, but I'm not privy to where they're going to put that, that particular sign.
Okay.
You know, we did work in Royal Oak and we didn't know where the permanent sign was going to be, but
Okay.
That's another company that makes that.
Oh, okay.
Not us. We don't fabricate that.
Okay. Okay, well, I mean, again, I think I agree with my colleagues that, you know, for one time use up to six months to get the permanent sign up, I would support this. So, Mr. Rogers, will you go ahead and make a motion?
In regards to ZBK's 25-07, the appellant, Robert Dempster from Dempster Designs, representing the owner, Ara Telbelian, Director of Marketing for Henry Ford Health, is requesting the following waivers from the board. One, a waiver of time period allowed for a temporary banner, six months proposed, not more than 30 days every three months allowed, a variance of five months or approximately 150 days, and a waiver in banner size, 840 square feet proposed, 50 square feet allowed, a variance of 790 square feet. Property is located at 16001 West Nine Mile Road, Sidwell parcel number 76-24-36-203-001, zoned ERO, Education Research Office. I make a motion to approve both waivers, one for the temporary banner size, 840 square feet proposed, 50 square feet allowed, a variance of 790 square feet, I approve, and for the waiver for a time period for a temporary banner, six months proposed, not more than 30 days every three months allowed, a variance of five months or approximately 150 days, I approve as well.
Second. Any conditions?
The only condition I would add is that the time period, if you do take less than six months to get the permanent sign, that the- six months to get the permanent sign, that the temporary banner will be removed simultaneously.
Perfect, yeah.
Okay. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, your request is granted.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. All right, will the city call the next case, please?
Case number 25-08. The appellant, Allied Signs, representing Brian Nager, Manager of Solo Company LLC, is requesting the following waivers from the board: One, a waiver of wall signage area; three hundred and seven square feet proposed; two hundred square feet permitted; a variance of one hundred and seven square feet; and (2), a waiver for number of wall signs; three wall signs proposed; one, two hundred and ninety-one square foot main wall sign; and (2), eight square foot oval entrance logo plaques proposed; one wall sign permitted. The property is located on the west side of Greenfield Road between Providence Drive and Mount Vernon Street at 23675 Greenfield Road, Sidwell Parcel Number 762425401018, Zoned B3, General Business District. This appeal is to Chapter 99, Article 11, Section 8.59, 1B/C, more commonly known as the sign ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Is the appellant here?
It's me again, Richard Attell, 2150 Franklin. The Kansas City Chiefs couldn't win three in a row, but hopefully we might be able to win three in a row. We're happy to have Ross as one of the new three tenants, and for all the reasons stated before, because of the rejuvenation of the center and the distance from the road, we're requesting this excess square footage, and also the additional signs are kind of like small plaques that are down below.
I'm sorry, Mr. Attell, can I interrupt you for one second? Is there anyone from Allied Signs here? Because I don't...
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Sorry, you're actually not the authorized representative on this one.
So I'll let Allied Signs take over, but we respectfully request the approval. And again, we're looking forward to all three tenants opening up this summer and should be very exciting for this center, obviously, and for the city as well. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Hi there.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Bob Bonjourno with Allied Signs. My address is 33650 Gifto's Drive, Clinton Township. I'm here on behalf of Ross Dress for Less, located at 23675 Greenfield Road, and we are requesting a couple of variances. One for additional square footage for a wall sign, and two for additional signages for the storefront. The ordinance allows one, and we're requesting a variance for two additional small wall plaques, and additional square footage for the main sign on the building facade. I'd like to make a point that the building itself has a pretty big setback from the road at three hundred and forty, three hundred and forty feet setback from roadway. The building frontage is a hundred and five foot in length, which the facade has enough room for a little additional square footage that we're requesting, which is only ninety-seven more additional square feet than they allow, two hundred square feet. The plaques, the lower plaques, that is more of a identification sign for people that are sitting in their cars, looking through their windshields, the line of sight, driving through the parking lots, more of a navigational thing to make it easier to see something straight on line of sight, instead of looking up, trying to see the sign as you get closer to the building. So it's more about identification and wayfinding signs for the plaques. I also like to make a point that I think that municipalities, cities should help out retail brick and mortar stores nowadays with their competition, with, say, Amazon. Brick and mortar stores are fallen, fallen back in history with Amazon taking over. So anyone that's willing to open up a retail store, brick and mortar store in any city, I think the city should absolutely try to do anything they can to help that retail store succeed. So we're requesting a little additional square footage and a couple additional wall plaques for the front of storefront.
Okay, thank you. Will the city read the findings of fact, please?
The appellant, Allied Signs, representing Brian Nager, Manager of Solo Company LLC, is requesting the following waivers from the board: One, a waiver of wall signage area; three hundred and seven square feet proposed; two hundred square feet permitted; a variance of one hundred and seven square feet; and (2), a waiver for number of wall signs; three wall signs proposed; one, two hundred and ninety-one square foot main wall sign; and (2), eight square foot oval entrance logo plaques proposed; one wall sign permitted. The property is located on the west side of Greenfield Road between Providence Drive and Mount Vernon Street at 23675 Greenfield Road, Sidwell Parcel Number 762425401018, Zoned B3, General Business District. This appeal is to Chapter 99, Article 11, Section 8.59, 1B/C, more commonly known as the sign ordinance. The properties to the north are zoned RT. The west portion of this RT-zoned area is part of the adjacent high-rise residential property parcel to the west, zoned RMU. This area has a walking path and a designated outdoor cooking dining area that is accessible from the adjacent high-rise residential property, RMU, to the west. The east portion of this RT-zoned area is located at the southwest corner of Mount Vernon Street and Greenfield Road. This vacant property is owned by the City of Southfield and is landscaped with small trees and/or bushes. The properties to the south are zoned RMM, Multiple Family Residential District Medium-Rise, and B3, General Business District. The Village at Cornerstone, a residential townhouse community, is located within the RMM, Multiple Family Residential Medium-Rise District to the south. There are also several existing businesses within the B3, General Business District, that is located to the south, including a single-story, multi-tenant building, as well as an Outback Steakhouse Restaurant with a dining room. The properties to the east are located within the City of Oak Park along the east side of Greenfield Road. These properties appear to be single-family residential properties. The subject property is approximately 26,225 square feet and is the middle center tenant space within an approximately 65,000 square foot commercial building. The subject property is currently under construction and is the future location of a Ross Dress for Less retail store. The storefrontage of the Ross Dress for Less retail store is approximately 105 linear feet.
Okay, thank you. Do you agree with those facts?
Yes, I do.
Any other facts you'd like to add at this time?
No.
Okay. Will the city read the recommendation, please?
Staff recommendation is for favorable consideration for (1) a waiver of wall sign area; three hundred and seven square feet proposed; two hundred square feet permitted; a variance of one hundred and seven square feet; and (2), a waiver for an additional two, eight square foot oval entrance logo plaques; total of three wall signs proposed; one wall sign permitted, with the following condition, conditions. The appellant secures all the required permits and inspections received final approval from the City of Southfield Building Department. This recommendation is based on the following: The proposed wall signs would face the parking lot. The proposed wall signs would be facing a major thoroughfare. Although one wall sign is permitted per tenant, the additional two, eight square foot logo, oval entrance logo plaques appear to be consistent with the Ross Dress for Less storefront design. Due to extraordinary or exceptional conditions of the property on which the signs proposed, and the strict application of the regulations would result in practical difficulties to or undue hardship upon the owner of such property, provided such relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantially impairing the intent and purpose of this chapter, and that the proposed signs are consistent with the spirit and intent of this chapter and the regulations which apply to the zoning district, and that the proposed signs are in keeping with the character of the surrounding area and would not have an adverse or detrimental effect upon adjacent or surrounding properties, and that the proposed signs will not interfere with or be objectionable from the standpoint of traffic safety.
All right, thank you. Anything else you'd like to add before public comment?
No.
Okay, thank you. We will open public comment on this case. If you would like to speak, now is your opportunity.
Hello, I'm Molly Lalone, the Executive Director for the Southfield Downtown Development Authority. My office is 18,000 West Nine Mile, Suite 320. This is in my district. It's in the north end of the Cornerstone District. The plaza has had, it's been a depressed property for a few years. I believe that this storefront and the two others that are joining it are going to help to revitalize this area. I think that the traffic that the, the traffic these stores will attract will also make it, make this whole plaza more attractive to businesses that can locate in the smaller storefronts. So this will help revitalize the entire shopping center. This shopping center is surrounded by residential area, AKA potential customers. So that's, so I think these stores have a very good chance for success being in this location. They are right down the street from the Northland City Center, a mixed-use development that is under construction right now, and they are right around the corner from the Henry Ford Health Providence Hospital, which is the largest employer in Southfield. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Now is your chance. Seeing none, we'll close public comment, turn it over to the board. Ms. Levin?
I have no problem with it at all.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rogers?
I'm good with it.
All right, Mr. Jenkins, your opinion?
I'm in favor of it.
All right, great. I agree. Ms. Levin, will you make a motion for us, please?
Sure. The appellant, Allied Signs, representing Brian Nager, Manager of Solo Company LLC, is requesting the following waivers from the board: A waiver of wall sign area; three oh seven square foot proposed; two hundred square feet permitted; a variance of one hundred and seven square feet; and a waiver for the number of wall signs; three wall signs proposed; and one, two ninety-one square foot main wall sign; and two, eight square foot oval entrance logo plaques proposed; one wall sign permitted. The property is located on the west side of Greenfield Road between Providence Drive and Mount Vernon Street at 23675 Greenfield Road, Sidwell Parpetty Number 76-24-25-401-018, Zoned B3, General Business District. I move the waiver of wall sign area; three oh seven square foot proposed; two hundred square foot permitted; a variance of one oh seven square feet; and a waiver for an additional two, eight square foot oval entrance logo plaques; total of three wall signs proposed; one wall sign permitted, with the following conditions: The appellant secures all the required permits and instructions received final approval from the City of Southfield Building Department. I move that the motion is based on the following: The proposed wall signs would face the parking lot. The proposed wall signs would be facing a major thoroughfare. Although one wall sign is permitted per tenant, the additional two, eight square foot oval entrance logo plaques appear to be consistent with the Ross Dress for Less storefront design. Due to extraordinary or exceptional conditions of the property on which the signs are proposed, and the strict application of the regulations would result in practical difficulties to or undue hardship upon the owner of such property, provided such relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantially impairing the intent and purpose of this chapter, and that the proposed signs are consistent with the spirit and intent of this chapter and the regulations which apply to the zoning district, and that the proposed signs are in keeping with the character of the surrounding area and would not have an adverse or detrimental effect on adjacent or surrounding properties, and that the proposed signs will not interfere with or be objectionable from the standpoint of traffic safety. And I so move.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Your request is granted. Thank you.
Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you. So that closes our public hearing. We do have one set of minutes from March 4th. Does anyone have any corrections or changes? If not, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes from March 4th.
Move approval of the minutes from March 4th as presented.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, looks like we have two cases for April 15th. Commercial case on building height and a sign case, wall sign variance, and also May 6th are on the docket. So put them on your calendars, please. Any miscellaneous? I just wanted to say I really appreciate in the findings of fact how at the bottom you're adding like kind of what the code is. That's helpful. So whoever's doing that, thank you. And anything else? We'll take a motion to adjourn?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye, we adjourn.